...for Scranton School Board, December 28th. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Yes. Executive sessions were held on November 20th, December 14th, December 18th, and this evening, 2017, to discuss personal litigation, real estate, contract negotiations. And I do have a small statement to read. There's been a great deal of recent publicity and many questions regarding the De Naples transportation contract and the healthcare benefits that were provided to Daniel Sansky. And so I want to give this statement in the hopes of providing more clarity and transparency for the public and the stakeholders who are interested in this matter. First, let me start off by saying that we've been working on this with PFM, our technical advisors, and that they've indicated that they're doing an analysis of costs in terms of other busing contracts in urban school districts to see how we fare in that particular matter. And we will use that to try to gain more favorable terms with the vendor. The second thing that they're doing is a root review with the possible use of an expert to provide more efficiencies on both of our transportation contracts with both De Naples and Red Top Transportation. Now, addressing the De Naples contract, I want to talk about addendums. There was an addendum in 2012. It was signed by De Naples. It was voted on by the full board of directors and attached to a resolution. The same procedure was followed in 2016. The very definition of a contract is an offer and then an acceptance, which occurred in both instances. Now, looking at the cost of the De Naples contract, from 2006 to 2012, the per-bus cost went from $193 per bus to $294.75. The actual cost over the last few years, 2012-13, it was $294.75 per bus. 2013-14, it was $294.75 per bus. 2014-15, it was $294.74 per bus. In 2015 and 16, it increased to $306 per bus. However, there were approximately 18 percent of the bus runs were cut through staggering starting times and consolidating runs, which resulted in a decrease in the overall cost of transportation of some $500,000. The actual cost of busing under the De Naples contract in 2012-13 was 3.13 million. In 2013-14, 3.23. In 2014-15, 3.29. In 2015-16, 2.78. The 15-16 rate of 2.78 is lower than the 11-12 rate, which was 2.934 million. As you can see, the actual cost per bus was frozen. There were slight increases in some of those years because we have an increase in the population and number of students, or so we're transporting more students. You know, you'll see that, that's evidenced as well. When you look at the number of buses, I think in 2006, there were 48, and over the life, when I looked at it, I think it topped off at 63. And in 15 and 16, I think we had 53 buses. So that's about where we're at right now. You can also see that in the 16-17 year, we're paying $293 per bus. That rate is locked in for the remainder of the contract. There are no increases in terms of percentages or additional fuel surcharges. There will be a per gallon adjustment depending upon the rate of gas, and we're working on that right now with PFM. They've given me some suggestions on how to go forward with that. I've also spoken directly with the vendor, and he's indicated a willingness to try to help us save some more funds if that's at all possible. I want to point out the fact that, you know, after we get our state reimbursement back on our cost of transportation, the total cost of the De Naples transportation contract, you know, probably is in a 1% to 2% range of our total budget. You know, while we want to do things properly, and we certainly want to save as much money as we possibly can, I want to emphasize that, you know, that's a very, very small part of the deficit that we have. I also want to emphasize that over the course of the last five years, that cost has gone down. We've actually bent the curve on that. And I think that that's important for the public to know. So going on, I want to talk about Mr. Sansky. Mr. Sansky was hired as a fleet manager in 2005. He was applied for and was given healthcare benefits in 2006, long before virtually everyone here on this board was here, and same, I think, applies to our busing. But in 2014, it was brought to the attention of the board of directors that Mr. Sansky was receiving healthcare benefits. There are several members of this board who were there then. I recommended that those benefits be terminated, those healthcare benefits, because he was not an employee. And a non-employee may not be covered by our stop-loss insurance, which could result in additional liability to the district. That was the recommendation of the board of directors. Unfortunately, and I don't know why, and we're going to do all our due diligence to try to find out why, that didn't happen. In 2017, it was brought to our attention. I again made the same recommendation. The board again said to terminate his healthcare benefits, and at that time, it was done. I want to point out that that was done before the auditor general came into Scranton and looked into that matter, or before anyone was aware of it. And I want to emphasize that we are going to do our due diligence to find out what happened, first of all, in 2006, and how he was awarded the healthcare benefits to begin with. If we can find that out, it's quite a long time ago. And then what occurred in 2014. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Menor. It's time for our superintendent, Dr. Kirian. Do you have a report?
Yes, thank you. At this time, I have nothing new to report.
Thank you, Dr. Kirian. This now brings us to the public comment section of our agenda, and I believe it's Tom Miller would be our first speaker.
I apologize, I haven't been following totally the meetings that have been going on. It was said that a non-employee was receiving benefits? What's going to be done to recoup the cost to the district for those benefits that were paid out all of that time?[544.12][544.12](Applause) I mean, I'm no fool, and I'm sure that...
I don't want to interrupt you, so I'll answer the question, or you can continue with that one.
Go ahead, go ahead.
There's currently litigation that's trying to recover precisely those costs, if they're recoverable. However, you know, those benefits were authorized. It's, you know, it was not illegal for him to receive that benefit, okay? It presented a technical problem from the standpoint of our stop-loss insurance.
But a school board said yes to an employee and never canceled those benefits when they were no longer employed?
In 2006, he was authorized those benefits. In 2014, the board wanted those benefits canceled. Why it didn't happen, we're going to use all of our due diligence to discover why. I don't know why.
When did his employment end?
Well, he wasn't an employee...
He was never an employee, so he didn't...
He was the fleet manager. He was retained as the fleet manager in 2005, and he currently no longer acts as the fleet manager.
Okay. So we're looking at a possibility of cutting teachers from the current employment situation, but we can't collect on benefits that were paid to a non-employee?[641.12][641.12](Applause) That needs to be addressed. Needs to be addressed seriously.
You know, again, as I said to you, there's current litigation that is exploring exactly that possibility. If they're successful, then that will happen. If they're unsuccessful, then it won't.
Okay. Now, I'm not sure who to address this to, but I just learned that there was a possibility of a 4% give-back from the board as part of this budget negotiation. 4%? Really? You want to take jobs from teachers? The people who are out here educating our students, and you only want to give 4%? Why don't you go back to the base rate and give a logic number, like 25%, something that's going to make a difference?[696.98][696.98](Applause) 4% from something that you're given now? This problem has been 30-plus years in the making. And unfortunately, you guys have the responsibility to try to fix it. Stop putting Band-Aids on it.[712.00][712.00](Applause) What's it cost for district monthly to run that administration building down there? Has anyone looked at taking and closing that administration building and putting offices back in the schools? Dunmore School District doesn't.[732.12][732.12](Applause) Dunmore School District's administration building is right in their high school. The administration before you built this very school. An opportunity could have been made then to put your offices in this building, and it wasn't done. But yet today, you want to cut arts, music, and teachers' jobs?[758.62][758.62](Applause) And all you want to do is put a Band-Aid up. Well, I wanted to make sure that members of one of those arts that you want to cut had a chance to address you. I have with me members of the Scranton High School's marching knights who want to say something.[778.41][778.41](Applause)
Hi. My name is Joshua Radford, and I'm a senior here at Scranton High School. I would like to bring up to the fact that music is important. I don't understand why you would like to cut the jobs of the teachers. I'm not up to date with the information that is going on, but I've heard that teachers might be cut over this. I would just like to know from everybody's opinion, why would you want to do that? And another question is, what percentage does the central administration interact one-on-one with the students each week?[810.12][810.12](Applause) It was an honest question. I'm sorry to say it like this, and no offense, but I would like to know an answer.[821.23][821.23](Applause) Walif, yep?
I'm going to try to answer you, honey, but central administration, as far as working one-on-one with the students, I'm not sure about that. But we're looking very closely at doing everything possible to avoid as much as we can to make best for the students.
Okay, well, thank you for the answer.
You're welcome.
Next question is, how can you justify the teachers who work 100% with the students each day of the week and give their time to devoting their teachings to the students? They're the ones actually giving their time to benefit the future leaders of America.[857.37][857.37](Applause) All right, then I would like to move on, then. There's nothing really completed.
Honey, I'm going to try to answer this. We try not to answer questions so everybody can get their things in, but I'll answer you. I'm a former educator as well. We are all working very hard to give everybody the best education that they possibly can get.
All right, well, thank you. Last thing I would like to bring up, I've noticed that after two hours, people in front of me need a break. I would like to bring this up as in, how would you feel if you were an elementary school student who spends six hours each day of the week in a single classroom?[919.12][919.12](Applause) An answer for that one, too, ma'am?
I guess I'm answering all your questions here.
You are?
We're looking very seriously at that. We understand, and we've heard everybody's concerns.
All righty, well, thank you. Actually, last thing I want to bring up, sorry to waste your time, but music, in my opinion, is something dear to my heart. I tried football for about one month, and I had to give up on that because I didn't find enjoyment out of it. It wasn't just for me, it's because I wasn't the biggest kid or the scrawniest kid or fastest runner. I went back to music, which I've been in since the sixth grade. I have many of my music teachers here with me as I speak, and I've been with this for seven years. I may have said that. But I would just like to know, all of you listen to the radio, correct? That's music. Why would you want to cut that away from us? You do watch movies. That is an art. Why do you want to take that away? The students behind me, right here, they're all in music as well. You heard them, Scranton High marching knights. Why do you want to get rid of music? Well, not music essentially, but teachers and music as well. Sorry, I'm stuttering. I'm a little nervous about speaking in front of people.[1007.12][1007.12](Applause)
You're doing a great job. We're peeling back this budget one layer at a time to try and avoid as much as we can possibly.
All righty. The thing is, I would like to see a little bit of a, not to be hasty, but a little bit quicker motive, in a sense, if I should say it like that. I'd like to see you guys work a little faster to get the job done and not have us sit around waiting to make sure that our teachers don't get fired over a silly decision that you guys would like to make.[1042.44][1042.44](Applause) Anything?
Doing our best. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That's all.
Just on a final note, before a decision is made to cut a teacher in our district, why don't you look at administration and see where you can make the cuts in administration?
Thank you, sir.
(Inaudible) Excuse me. Can I say something?
Absolutely.
So, I'm a very new member here. This is, I think, exactly my third week on the job. And I say "job" because it's a job that we are all after at all hours of the day. You can ask our spouses, you can ask my colleagues' children. Something that is maybe not clear and it's easy to throw stones at the folks on stage, we are not paid. I've heard this many, many times, that our salaries are increasing, we get paid double teachers, we get paid double admin... We are not paid. We are here because we care about kids of this district, we care about the parents, we care about the teachers, we care about our taxpayers, and most broadly, we care about our community and the success of this city. So I understand that we are all in a really tough position, but there are a couple facts out there that I really implore educators and parents to make sure the students know before villainizing the folks on the stage.
And if I could just add to that, I think one of the inherent tones that I've noticed, especially from the students, I'm the father of a second-grade student at Prescott Elementary. I think the tone is, and what has been said even by the second speaker tonight, is why would we like to do that? Why do we like to have? There's no one on this board that likes any of the decisions that we're making, anything that's going on here. There is a catastrophic gap in deficit that we are paid per student at a state level that we've gone to the governor's office and argued for and gotten an additional $2 million to help. I think if we continue the course and we continue to make some of these terrible decisions, we will get further help, and we will move further toward an actual budget that doesn't call for borrowing after we've given everything to it. There's no want or desire to do any of this whatsoever at all. I just think that that definitely needs to be cleared up. But I have to say this, we really appreciate every student coming up, every teacher coming up, and at least expressing their points. It takes a lot of courage to do that, and I think you did a great job. You didn't have anything to be nervous about. Thank you.
Thank you. Roberta, is it Jaddick?
Thank you for giving me the chance to speak. I am a newly appointed employee of the Scranton School District, although I have subbed as a clerk and a para for about eight or nine years. But I have recently been appointed to be a PCA at Monticello. I have a question, probably which should be directed to Mr. Menor about the E&amp;O policy. What is the deductible per occurrence on the policy, Mr. Menor?
I don't know. I'd have to look at the policy. I know it's, the carrier is AIG, but I do not know the deductible off the top of my head.
Okay. Will this total claim be placed or filed against the 2017 policy? Or will it be grandfathered, so to speak, to previous years?
I think what you're asking is a coverage question. And at some point, the carrier may raise that issue, although I think most policies are claims made, so it's when the claim was made.
Okay, because if not...
I think it would just be a claims-made policy. So it's when the claim was made.
Okay, because my concern would be the deductible.
Right.
And if we had to claim a deductible each year?
No, no, I think it's a claims-made policy.
Okay, thank you. I then have a question about the discontinuation of the languages. Now, there's, if my numbers are correct, approximately 10,000 students in the Scranton School District. I'm not sure how many are taking languages in the junior high or high school level. But what is the plan for these kids? They will not have a class to go to. Some of them may not have two classes to go to if they are able to take Latin and another language. What are the plans for them? Or are we just looking at cuts, and then we'll figure out the plan later? Sue?
Go ahead. Am I the same question as you did this? How do you start this keating? And we're looking into maybe utilizing the apex model for that, with regards to Latin and German. So there is some research going on now to see how we can put that in place as a solution.
Because to me, it seems counterintuitive to cut the subject and then figure out what to do with the kids. I would think that it would be at the same time.[1378.12][1378.12](Applause)
I have to respond to that and work with, if there's any kind of additional cuts or whatever, if there's discontinuing in the student requests and the requests are smaller, that's a master schedule that has to be built before you even schedule. So that is looked at prior to that, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Jimmy Carroll? Thank you, Roberta.
Good evening. First off, I want to say, you know, thank you for all your hard work that you've been putting in the last two nights. I was sitting right over there after the last two nights, and I know they are working hard to try to get this deficit down. I have a few questions, own clarifications, that I would like answered, please, tonight. First off, Mr. Menor, you spoke a lot about De Naples Transportation.
Yes, sir.
We did not hear anything about the $4 million fuel surcharge that was back in 2006.[1438.12][1438.12](Applause) Is there any attempt to try to recoup some, not all of that money?
The 4% fuel surcharge was part of the contract from 2006 going forward. The 4% fuel surcharge, if you listen to the figures I listed, you know, wasn't charged for almost all of those years. When the report was written, the way I read it, it talked about what the potential cost could be, not what the actual cost was. So if those, that fuel surcharge and those annual increases has been garnered every year, that would have been the actual cost. That was not the actual cost. That was not the actual cost. In fact, in most of those years, I can only speak for the years that I've been here, it wasn't taken at all.
But in the auditor general's report, though, it stated that...
In theory, it could have been taken. In theory. In actuality, it wasn't.
Do we know that for sure, though? Because no one's...
Well, it wasn't in 12-13, 13-14, 14-15, or 16-17.
But this dates back to 2006, though.
Well, 2006 is 11 years ago. Even if you were to raise a civil action, assuming that he didn't have a contracted right to charge that at various times, and he did not charge it every year in that period of time, but assuming that they did have the contracted right to charge it, it would be well beyond the Civil Statute of Limitations. Case would be dismissed immediately. You have a four-year statute of limitations on a contract action.
Okay. All right, moving on. Last night, I heard that if we pass, if you passed an unbalanced budget, that would not move our district to a different level towards state receivership or takeover. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes, that is correct.
How many stages are we away from having the state take over? Like, right now, we're at financial watch. How many stages or levels until that happens?
That's not correct, sir. That was my question last night with PFM, that if the option we take is an unbalanced budget, does that put us at risk or into stage two, which is recovery then receivership? I was assured by the PFM consulting room that that is not the case. So I asked that the same question last night.
And that under normal circumstances, for an unbalanced budget, is it provided, then we would essentially move to that next level of where we're currently at? So by them giving us this extension, it is in fact waiving that possibility from us moving from one level to the next.
Okay.
I may have misunderstood your question. We're not moving to the next level if we don't balance the budget tonight.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Okay.
The district will not move to the next level if an unbalanced budget gets passed.
We got an extension.
Okay. My third question that I'd like an answer for, please, is, Mr. Menor said again that, you know, we staggered the busing or the start times for...
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, sir.
We staggered the busing for the elementary level and the middle school level, and that saved about 18% of the buses that were being used, correct?
Correct.
Do we know how much money that was saved?
It saved about a half a million dollars.
About a half a million? Okay.
About a half a million dollars in the 15-16 year.
Okay.
So it went from about 3.29 million to a total cost of about 2.78 million in the 15-16 school year.
Okay. Could we revisit, please, the elementary proposed plan for the upcoming 2018 school year? It states that students will be arriving around 8:30, which is comparable or the same time practically as the middle school students would be arriving. So wouldn't you need more buses then, since it won't be required busing at the same time?
We would be flipping the start times that we currently have. Elementary would start earlier, or, I'm sorry, middle school would start earlier.
Okay. How does that impact parents, though, who have to go to work, let's say, before 8 o'clock, and their six-year-old or seven-year-old is at home, and they have to get themselves to school by 8:30 or 8:40?[1702.33][1702.33](Applause) Now, everything looks nice on the board or on your paper, but not all young children have older siblings to take care of them. And parents work, and some parents go to work before 8 o'clock, and the elementary date of the start is till 8:30, 8:40. That leaves a big gap for, again, a five, six, seven-year-old to take themselves to school if they're not one of the ones to ride buses.[1730.41][1730.41](Applause) Another point I want to bring up about the elementary-level school date is that you have the prep time from 8 to 8:40. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All teachers will go and prep from 8 to 8:40. And then, under the proposed plan, that academic teachers, the elementary teachers, would be required to teach related arts, so within that 40 minutes, they would have to make some sort of time to plan sufficient instructional time for those related arts classes. So that prep period then shrinks to, let's say, 30 minutes. Well, my point being is, typically how things have worked in this district is when an academic or elementary teacher would go on prep, the students would be in related arts. So if you do the math, you're actually depriving the students 40 minutes of education time every day.[1786.83][1786.83](Applause) Right now, as it currently stands, students arrive at 8:10, I leave at 2:25. Under the proposed plan, they want, or you want, excuse me... Under the proposed plan, they want, or you want, excuse me, for the students to arrive at 8:30, have their breakfast in the cafeteria, which allows students to be observed and monitored by one person, the building principal. You know, that could be a safety issue, but that's nor here nor there. But again, 8:30 or 8:40, and then you have them getting out at 2:15, because contractually you have that six and one-quarter hour day from 8 to 2:15, that's six and one-quarter hours. But again, you're depriving 40 minutes because typically you could kill two birds in the same stone by having the academic teachers prep and the related art, related art classes be taught. So again, 40 minutes of each day, if you do the math, which I did, that equates to about 16.3 days lost, school days lost by the end of the year. I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Yeah, we took into account the early release Tuesdays.
That's counted that too. That's counted that too. You take 40 minutes a day, four days a week, that's 160 minutes. Then on that Tuesday, you take out the half hour early dismissal, so you add it only 10 minutes on that, that's 170 minutes times 36 weeks, gives you 6,120 minutes. You divide that by six and one-quarter hours, you're down to 16.3 days. And I know that everyone up here, all right, care about the PSSA score. So this is not just affecting related arts, this is affecting the academic time as well because, you know, the vigorous and the rigorous curriculum we have at the elementary level, not to mention all the time that the curriculum committee has put in, all the money that's been brought in, all right, and put into these curriculum ideas are now going to be gone by the wayside in a way because again, you're talking about it was a whole month of school taken away. So how do you expect these students to achieve on the PSSA level when they can't get a full 10 months or four year of education? Again, I want to thank you for your hard work and everything you've done over the last two days and the last few months as well. But I think we just need to look at these proposals more closely. And again, it's not just pen and paper, look at the bottom line, all right? You gotta look at the impact and implications. Again, you don't want a six-year-old boy or girl having to leave their school, or excuse me, leave their home to go to school at 8:25 and have to walk in a hole, maybe four blocks, five blocks by themselves. So again, all right, just look at the numbers, all right? Look at the deficit. You know, I get it, we're in a deficit, and I understand that we need to make hard decisions, but there's always other ways. And hopefully you'll look into other ways, and even if we have to pass an unbalanced budget, so be it. Just one clarification, then I'm done speaking. What happens in a state takeover ship? What are the ramifications? What happens? Cause I'm unclear about that. Like if the state takes over, or if we even move to the next level, so not even to a state takeover, what happens?
I'm gonna let Dr. Carrion answer that. Oh, you? Governor Trump.
There's, there's three steps. I think the, the, you know, in Act 55, recently modified, I think the second step, depending upon how much state aid is received, the financial recovery coordinator would propose a plan that the, you know, if, if we exceeded the amount of state aid necessary, the financial recovery coordinator would propose a plan that the board would be obligated to follow. And if the board didn't follow that recovery plan or recommendation under Act 55, and this is my understanding, it's a new statute, that, that they would actually run the school district, except for taxing, except for taxing. So, so either you would, you would get a recovery plan that, you know, that would happen to be followed by this board, and then the board would continue to do the day-to-day things that they do now, or, or the recovery coordinator would be doing all of those functions with the exception of taxing. That's my understanding of the new Act 55. The Act is a little different. They had three steps, but I frankly, with the new Act 55, I'm not sure that you'd ever get to the second or the third step based upon the fact that, you know, you'd need aid first to hit a certain threshold level, which would require a plan. I hope that answers your question.
Does. What about vendors and contracts? Will the state then be allowed to renegotiate all and every contract?
You know, I'm, I'm not certain of that. I don't think so though. I, I, you know, I think, I think what you're, what you're talking about, you know, is, is a different step in the three-step process, and I'm just not sure that we're ever going to get there with the new Act 55, to be perfectly frank with you.
Okay. All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Suzanne Fury?
Hopefully my voice will, will last until the end of what I have to say. First of all, I want to thank you. My name is Suzanne Fury, and I am a teacher in the Scranton School District, first grade level. I'm a member of the SFT, and I must say, I am a lifelong musician, and I don't know where I would be without that in my life. And when I think of the touch of music, I can't imagine where my life would be. Music is more than just playing an instrument or singing a note. It's a way that you can make a living, it's a way that you can become a better person. There's so many reasons for the arts, and I know many of them have been talked about, but that, that hurts me deeply to even think about it. But I, I do thank you very much for all of your hard work. I know you have been working difficult hours and had some meaningful dialogue to try to address the budget issues. And I would ask you to remember that when you are making these decisions, and, and I don't want to be negative at all, but I can't help to think that our children that we teach did not create this debt, and, and I still think that they are being punished for it. I've said it the last minute. I know that we have difficult decisions, and there's never going to be a decision made that everyone is going to agree with, but this will hurt our students the most of anything. And, and I'm wondering that, there has been talk about going line by line and seeing where the money's going, and I know you seem to be doing that, and I would strongly urge that you continue to do that because I fully believe that there are still cuts to be made that do not have to be made to our faculty and our programs. One of my concerns is that we have over an 80% poverty rate in our city, and the very last thing we should be considering is taking our teachers away and our programs. For many of our students, that teacher is the only stable adult in their lives. And I know, we, we are with these children five days a week. We are with them all day. We see it. We see them come off the bus every day, crying, fighting, tired, dirty, hungry. And, and for many of them, we are a lifeline. I, I'm sorry to say that, but it's true. And financially, I know that you, your job is to look at the numbers. I understand that. But they are not numbers. They're, they're not dollars. And, and when you're making these cuts, you're affecting somebody's daughter, somebody's son, somebody's niece, somebody's nephew, somebody's granddaughter, somebody's grandson. And I know, Mr. Duff, you've expressed some concern because you do have a child within the district. Before we are making this cut, these cuts, please think about the consequences because every action has consequences. I try to imagine a building with no music teacher, no librarian, no gym teacher, or no art teacher. We don't have that expertise. I am a musician, but I still do not feel qualified to teach a music class. We need the expertise and the experience of these wonderful related arts teachers that we have. That's the best we can give to our children. And the big concern I have is the effect on the wonderful city of Scranton. And I ask you to think about a few things because this is going to have a ripple effect. Because to be quite honest, I can't imagine a family considering a relocation and coming into a district where all we're hearing, we're cutting related arts, we're cutting languages. We've already cut, made other cuts at the high school level. Who is going to want to bring their family here? What maybe teachers are going to come out of school and say, yes, I want to go to the city of Scranton and teach? We need the very best teachers we can get. Our children deserve that. And I'm concerned that these cuts in programs will deeply affect what we are going to attract to this city. And I know there are many people wondering, I feel like the city is right on the cusp. And I know there are many wonderful people trying to bring it back to life, and I feel like it's, it's, the balloon is going up, and if these cuts are made, the balloon is going to be popped, and I feel like we're going to go right back to where we started. And, and I also have talked to some parents in our school who have said that they will seriously consider leaving the city because they want their children to have that education. And, and I say this because I know you have difficult decisions, but it seems like cutting teachers and programs was the very first option, and, and I feel like it should be the last. These programs are so vitally, vitally important. And I ask you, please, continue doing what you're doing. Please examine line by line. And I was so happy to hear that, that the cell phone issue has been addressed. I'm wondering about the, the district vehicles. Do we need as many? Do, I, I know that there are employees who take these vehicles home, and as a public school, I wonder, is that really necessary? We're a public school. I'm going to, I'm going to thank each of them. I know they are not easy decisions, but please do not take away from your children. Find another way. And I sincerely hope that you listen to the speaker before me because I echo everything he said. These children are going to learn, lose instructional time every single day. I don't think that's what we want, and I really don't think that's what you want either. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Suzanne. Ryan? Brian Knapp? Is it Knapp?
Yes, that is it.
Thank you.
I talked at school board meeting a while back, couple months, and I was pretty nervous at that time, still a little nervous now. My name is Ryan Knapp. I am a Scranton taxpayer, I am a Scranton business owner, a union member, and also our teacher in our Scranton School District. I'm here not to talk about saving arts. I think you've heard that enough. I'm here to talk to you about saving our community. Without the arts or music and all of the things you're talking about, even the languages, if we do not save those subjects, it's going to start tearing our community apart. You will, we have First Friday in Scranton. Have anybody been to First Friday? Couple people. It's a great event, and it's growing, and the city is growing, just like Ms. Fury actually said, who's also a Neil Armstrong teacher. The city is on its cusp. If you guys could correct this problem, it, it's going to just make the city grow even better and stronger, and it's going to unite everybody together. Us, you, the administration, everybody will make this city grow. One thing I had about the question about the budget was when you guys go to vote tonight, and this is something I want to just clarify, are you voting on the budget as a whole on the proposed budget? Are you going to be voting on line by line based on raising the taxes for the budget, the cuts and everything? I, I just wasn't sure what, what, how you guys are going to be doing that.
Budget as a whole.
Budget as a whole. Okay. So I really wanted to address, if you're voting on the budget as a whole, I really think you should table this entire budget and push it to another time. It just seems like a rush. You've been given time by the state to fix the problem. Take your time. Go line by line and figure out those solutions. There are a lot of smart people in Scranton, and I think this board is a very educated board, a very smart board. We need to take all the teamwork together, and the board has not been working as a team since I've been Scranton School District. I've picketed twice. I marched outside the administration building at least numerous times, five or six times. I've only been in the district six years. Like, it, it's absurd for me to be doing all that. I should be coming and only focusing on teaching. My morale has been at the bottom. The only thing that really makes me still, the only thing that makes me still go to work every day and really be pumped is to go see those kids. Now, I have huge pride in Scranton. It's one city, I'm not from this area. I came from Skogu County and moved here in Timwali. With that pride, I hope you guys take the same pride into this project and with balancing this budget. I know you're talking about a scoop effect to fix the budget, but please, talk to us and inform the community about fixing this budget and a long-term solution. Not just one year. Please inform us about three years, five-year plan, because that would make us feel a little bit more at ease, or we could help become the solution that you guys and girls all need. The last thing I just want to address is please, table this budget. Don't even, don't even vote tonight, or whatever you need to do. Push it, take the time, another month reconvene, and, and try it at that time.
Excuse me, Ryan?
Yes.
We will have to get a budget in, balanced or unbalanced, but no matter what the decision is, this budget will not be binding.
Okay. All right, that, so if it's not binding, and you vote yes for this proposed budget, what should we do as these teachers that are on the line, the front line of cuts? What should we do? Should our morale go to the floor? Or, or should we embrace or be pumped for something to change for the future that you guys are going to fix this before the three-month period?
I understand that. I understand where you're coming from. I empathize. But just know that these directors, these nine directors, the administration, our solicitor, and everyone is trying to work, and the words that we do put forward mean something. And that's all I can say.
The one last closing comment I actually had, this is directed towards Mr. Menora, and it kind of stinks the podium's like three...
I know, I can see you.
How long have you been on the school board?
I've been this listener since 2012.
2012, okay. I just tried to backtrack some information, try and figure things out, and then that was pretty much my last question. Thank you, school board. I hope you make the best decision for not just administration, but for every player that's involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Kevin Hayes?
I, you know, I feel like I stand up for public education every day. Been doing that for a long time. I'm 65-year-old citizen of the city, taxpayer ever since I've been required to pay taxes. Teacher here in the district for 20 years. Love my job, love the students, love the content area. And I'm, I'm hoping, I'm asking you to stand up for public education. I'm asking you to stand up against overpayment of contractors. Because you can't do both. You just can't do both. Mr. Menora mentioned that, you know, the transportation contracts are a small part of the overall budget, but even though it's a small part of the overall budget, those overpayments have contributed probably millions every year since 2006, maybe, maybe before. When an auditor general says 198%, well, that's twice as much as you should be paying. If other school districts can do it within the state allowance, then I believe we can too, if we put our minds to it. When the auditor general says 533% of the state allowance, I believe that's way too much. And to allow that to continue after the, after Jack Wagner's audit, to allow that to continue is, is just beyond my comprehension. I, I can't understand it. I have to estimate something. I have to ask myself the question, why would it not be addressed? And why after Mr. Di Pasquale in 2013 come out with another audit citing the same overpayments, would it continue? And why, again, in the most recent time, when he cites millions of dollars being overpaid, is it not being addressed? I have to ask, why is that the case? Now, a lot of people are saying, you're afraid.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
If I could address some of your comments.
I, I'll ask you to, if you could please address it after I sit down, Mr. Menora?
Certainly, certainly.
Thank you, yeah. So, you know, it's been said that the overpayments have been made. Is it because there's some allegiance to these contractors? I don't know. You know, I don't know the answer to these questions. Is it fear? Is it allegiance? If it's either of those two, then you really shouldn't be in public education, you know, because it's harming the students. Millions of dollars being wasted, squandered. And as, as been said, you know, without addressing these things and without addressing over, you know, the, the payments to the mechanic and all the benefits that he receives, without addressing that first, I don't see how you can cut programs that'll hurt students and hurt teachers and put 89 teachers on the unemployment rolls. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Case. Kevin, you want?
Again, Mr. Case, you know, I went through, you know, those numbers and this contract since 2012 when I arrived. And as you can see, our, our actual, our actual cost, not what the theoretical cost could be, but our actual cost for transportation on the DeNaples side has gone down. The increase in transportation has, has been on the Red Top Special Education side where our population has grown. We've got mandatory transportation costs there, door to door. There are smaller buses, they require more buses. Our population in that area is growing and the cost there is growing. I'm willing to approach that vendor to try to save as much money as I can there as well. I've been aggressive about this. The growth in that contract was from 2006 to 2012. That per bus rate went from 193, topping off at $294 per bus in 2012. It's essentially stayed frozen there since. It's actually slightly less than that now. So we have been addressing it. We have been aggressive about negotiating over the last five years. We did a comparison in 2016 to other urban school districts, and what we found was that our price per bus, while not the cheapest, was certainly not the most expensive and fit somewhere in the middle of the road with other urban school districts. PFM is doing the same study for us. If PFM determines that our costs and our terms are out of line, we're going to go back to that vendor to try to get a better deal. And I give you my word, I've done that so far and I've always done that. We know each other and we like each other. I respect what you have to say. So I just want you to know that, and I want to reiterate that. And I want to reiterate that most of the growth in that contract was either in that period of 2006 to 2012 or on the Special Education Transportation side where we've got mandatory transportation. So we're, we're looking at that. We are trying, trying to do better. We're not perfect. And we're aggressively speaking to our vendors about that. And I hope, I hope that that, that, that satisfies you. We hear what you're saying, we're trying to do better, you know, and I, and I hope that you understand that. And I want to talk a little bit about state formula. State formula is based on mileage. School districts like North Mokeno and Abington that transfer, that transport, transport students over many, many, many miles do better on state formula and always will because of the way that formula is formulated. Urban school districts like Scranton that only transport students a few miles do fare more poorly in that reimbursement rate. That's a fact, that's a fact that's been discussed. I remember the presentation when we, when we, when we did a formula study back in 2016. And, you know, if you, if you tweak the mileage, you saw how the reimbursement went up. That illustration was done for some of the board members, Mark, you may recall it, and Mr. Casey. And, you know, until the state fixes the formula to treat urban school districts more fairly, that isn't going to change, whoever the vendor is. Our reimbursement rate is going to be low. And I don't believe that we'll ever meet state formula. I would love to tell you that we would, but let's be realistic about it. That isn't going to happen because the formula benefits urban or rural school districts that have many more miles to travel, that they get reimbursed for those miles as opposed to urban school districts like Scranton. So, you know, when they, when they compare us to state formula, they can compare us. That's the formula. I, I just don't think we're, you know, we're ever going to meet state formula. Can we do better? Perhaps. You know, we have newer buses. And because we have newer buses, we get a higher reimbursement rate. The rest of the reimbursement rate, if I'm not mistaken, is based on mileage. So I'm not sure that we can do a lot better with DeNaples. We can do better with newer buses with Red Top. So I, I just want to point that out to you, that, so that, you know, so that everybody understands with clarity just, just how the state formula works. Thank you.
President, may I respond briefly to Mr. Menora's statement?
Okay, I, I heard you, and I think I understand what you're saying. But the, I mean, the fact remains, 2006, it was three to five, or two to five times the going rate. Since then, the costs for transportation have increased 79%. How that's justified, I, I don't know. I don't think we're transporting 79% more students. I don't think fuel costs have gone up by 79%. It, it just seems ridiculous that the cost could skyrocket since then. It's over 11% per year since then. How can this be? I mean, what justifies those costs? And to your point about urban school districts, I've been looking at this since Jack Wagner's report in 2012. I looked at Johnstown, Erie, Pittsburgh, Allentown, Easton, Bethlehem, Harrisburg, Philadelphia. I've looked at all the urban school districts. And none of them have been cited by the auditor general the way we've been cited. He called his last audit, he called his last audit the worst he had ever seen. And I have seen all those previous audits of those urban school districts. I don't see anything like that for public transportation in their audits. So I, I don't know, you know, I don't know what's going on here. I don't, or is he just picking on us and leaving the rest of the urban school districts alone? I, I don't know. It seems to me something's wrong.
Well, again, what I would, what I would say to you, Mr. Case, is this, that most of that increase that you're referring to occurred between 2006 and 2012. The facts and the numbers bear that out. It went from $193 per bus in 2006 to $294 per bus in 2012. And that rate has stayed relatively flat the last five years. Our increase in cost over the last five years has come from the Special Education side. The other thing that you're not mentioning is that our number of buses has increased substantially as our population has grown. So in 2006, for example, we had 46 buses. But at our peak, we had 63 buses. So that's an increase of almost a third, just in the number of buses and the number of students that we're transporting. So you can, you can look at the cost, there's a lot of ways to look at the cost, but there's a lot more buses that are running and that were running over those years, and a lot more students that were being transported. So I do understand your concern. I don't want you to think that I'm being disrespectful or disagreeable. We're, we're doing our best to improve that situation, but I think we need to see the whole picture. We need to be as transparent as possible about this. You know, there is no doubt that it went from 46 buses to 63. So again, we cut those bus runs down to 53 and saved a significant amount of money in the 15, 16 year, brought it down less than it was in 11, 12. So we're doing our best and we're trying to do our part, and are trying to do more. I hope you understand that.
May I suggest that doing your best might be putting out RFPs to other transportation contractors?
This is Rosemary Wallen. My name is Rosemary Wallen. I'm the president of the Scranton Federation of Teachers. Like my colleague, Mrs. Fury, I too have an issue tonight. And I'm going to hopefully not go into a coughing spasm because I know my former student, Mr. Brazil over there, will be running wild to get me a glass of water. Brettson tonight, Jeff. Mr. Casey, you have to go back to your boss and you have to tell him to stop picking on the Scranton School District. Because apparently, whatever the heck you put in that audit, he's picking on us and nobody else. So that's not nice and it's not fair. Apparently, apparently, what he put in that audit is not based on fact. I don't quite get that. The Scranton Federation of Teachers is audited every August, and I know the kind of work we have to do to prepare for the audit. I know the Scranton School District is audited by Mr. Barbetti. And I know Mr. Barbetti's audits have produced significant challenges to our district. And they have been ignored over the years. When you have an audit, most of you know that you get letters of transmittal with those audits, and they flag you if you've done something incorrect. And you're supposed to fix it. Now, on a student's test paper, if I mark the question wrong and I say, take that paper back to your seat and get the correct answer, I'm not going to wait two years for that to happen or three years for that to happen. I want that done now. Every teacher in America wants that. Every teacher across the planet wants that. We don't give our students that kind of time. You know that, Mr. McCandrew. If that cake, cake flops over there, we don't have a couple of years to fix that. It has to be fixed right away. So, something is amiss in the district's audits from Mr. Barbetti and also the auditor generals. So, either A, all of these auditors are wrong, or they're not. Either the letters of transmittal citing what's wrong with the audits and what should be corrected with the audits is correct or it's not. If it's not correct, you should be challenging that and bringing them in to task. Mr. Di Pasquale is an elected official in the state of Pennsylvania. He has quite a team working for him. And I'm positive that when he came in here, he sat down like all auditors do and demanded certain documents in front of them. And they reviewed those documents page by page, line by line. We can't fudge that. You could try, but you can't. Now, Mr. Sandsky and the lawsuit. You may or may not be aware that when a teacher in this district, and also a paraprofessional, but when a teacher in this district retires, they pay 19 months in advance on their health care. So if you are a family, you're giving the district in excess of $22,000. A few years ago, 74 teachers retired. Year after that, 37 retired. Year after that, 34 teachers retired. A lot of those people have never been replaced. Through attrition, a lot of our jobs are gone. We are down guidance counselors. We're down teachers. We are down classes in this district. So when I hear people talking about pleading and how sad it is for so-and-so and so-and-so and so-and-so, well, I plead for my people too. We have given up jobs. We have cut classes. You know, a few years ago, when I was a kid, yeah, they're laughing. I was at, I was a student at Central High School and I studied Russian. Somebody told me, my French teacher, that it would be easy for me because I am half-Russian. Don't believe that. But in my class was a young lady and her sister. Her name was Jill Doherty. Her name still is Jill Doherty. It's the last of me, Jill. Jill Doherty wanted to take third and fourth year Russian, and it wasn't allowed because Mr. Peregrin, our teacher, couldn't muster enough students. So like all teachers, Mr. Peregrin worked with Jill and her sister Pam on his own time, and they scored perfect scores on the advanced placement. Jill Doherty became the CNN's Moscow Bureau Chief because she went to Scranton High Schools. And she matriculated, went off to college, and was a giant success at what she does. She's visited here a few times. She doesn't forget where she came from. But that language development was imperative to what she does for a living. That lady came from Scranton, Pennsylvania, and she became Moscow Bureau Chief for CNN. No small feat, no small feat at all. You go out in the hall and you look at that board out there, and you're going to see the names of students, some of whom I taught. They went through this building and they actually had a free ride to colleges and universities throughout this nation. They graduated top in their class. They weren't denied their languages. They weren't denied their AP Science courses. They weren't denied their AP Math. Alongside of those students, we have students here in this building and our other buildings who are in the industrial arts classes. You have students at Johnson, at CTC, who we would consider to be expert carpenters, expert. You would pay a fortune for them to make you a piece of furniture. You couldn't afford it. The same holds true for our students in the culinary arts. Otherwise, why would I go on to college, open a building, and start a program in culinary arts? It's because of the early training we give them in our schools. And now we're going to deprive them of that. I've heard speakers tell you you have difficult decisions. I've heard people say that this isn't on you, it's on previous boards. And it is. The reason I'm the president of the Scranton Federation of Teachers is because we were getting crucified with health care costs. I've had to study health care ad nauseam. I've had to sit down with health care consultants, health care providers, until I can't stand it. I'm doing that now. I have been doing that for approximately three months. And Mr. Menora, you can correct that if you feel like it.
I think we both have been, continually.
If you were to come and look at the computer, my computer in my office, it looks like a script from a Broadway play with two speakers. We are going to eventually, within a two-week period from now, settle the health care. We have been working, I don't know, 24 hours a day on it. We haven't had a break from it. But you will see, you will see results from that, a lot of it. And isn't it amazing that so many of my members who work in this school and other schools in this district are suffering from catastrophic illnesses? And I have to figure out a way with my board, my colleagues, to make sure they have health care in the United States of America. That's pathetic. Pathetic. I have to worry about an elementary teacher who's going to go into a classroom all day with a three-year-old or a four-year-old or a five-year-old or a six-year-old nonstop. If any of you have been privileged to be a parent or you know anything... If any of you have been privileged to be a parent or you know anything at all about children, try it. I see people at Mass trying to contain their child for forty-five minutes and they're not good at it. They get up and walk out. We don't get to get up and walk out. Sometimes we have to turn and face that whiteboard and get our composure and then turn around and start all over again. But to suggest some of these, quote, "developmentally inappropriate" decisions is not a good idea. I would invite you, the board, to take a trip to an elementary school where you live[641.29][641.29](APPLAUSE), and see what goes on in that classroom. I don't know if you'd believe it. I know you've all gone to elementary school. I did. I can remember my sixth-grade teacher at Stowe School. Her name was Ms. Lord. I took out a piece of paper. I had a certain way I had to fold it and I wrote down the page numbers of the math pages I had to complete that day. And then diligently, each student got up, went to Ms. Lord and she took our paper, corrected it, sent us back to make our corrections. Try doing that now. Try giving the children a list of pages to do and go back to your seat and do them and then bring them over to me so I can correct them. The teacher would be given an unsatisfactory immediately and you'd be able to dismiss them. This is 2017. What we're being asked to do is unbelievable. The federal government makes laws and policies, but they don't pay us enough money to enact them. The State Department of Education in Pennsylvania makes policies and says, "Do this and do this and do it." But they don't put their money where their mouth is. They just say, "Do it."[728.56][728.56](APPLAUSE). So, Mr. Duffy, I'm going to accept your challenge. I think you and I should get to the Lawrence Bus Terminal and hire some buses. And I think it's time for all of us to go to Harrisburg. And I think it's time for us to say to them, "Put up or shut up."
I couldn't agree more.
Two million dollars.
You're right. And that challenge, I don't think it counts. I think it should be the beginning of a partnership.
I, I can't, I am born ready.[761.12][761.12](APPLAUSE). I've read Act 55 from page to page. It's the most inane act I've ever read and I've read most of them. It's idiotic. What's included in that act is ridiculous, to say the least. I would venture to say that act was written to punish the Scranton School District because we seem to fit that act to a T. And isn't it funny that in a democratic city with a democratic school board and a Republican legislature in Harrisburg, we're getting beat up pretty badly? It's time to take people to task for doing that to our students in this district. And I say we get on more of those buses and take it to them. Enough tonight.[813.12][813.12](APPLAUSE). So, Mr. Menor and I are going to sit down at a negotiating table in a few days and the mediator has been notified by me that everybody coming to that table better have facts. And I don't mean the to-be-determined kind. I mean the kind that are real, honest-to-God numbers. I won't negotiate unless there's numbers on that table and they better be backed up by truth. Because we will dig into those numbers and they better be correct. That health care should not be listed as twenty-two million dollars. That's bull. Wrong. I know it's wrong. So I don't know where twenty-two came from. It isn't twenty-two. And you're not including the stop-loss in there. You're not including the rebates in there that you get from the brands on RX. I know you're not. Because as soon as I get a paper with the numbers on it, I can tell if they're mine or somebody else's. The last time Mr. Menor and I sat down with numbers, I said that to him, "These can't be right. They're too low." And you know why they weren't ours? Because they belong to the maintenance. They were not our documents. So numbers don't lie and I love math. And so does the rest of my team, as you figured out. So we sit down next Friday to start this contract business. We better have all the right information in front of us because we'll know if we don't. We'll know instantaneously. And there are nine-hundred-and-thirty-one lives at stake here, including the eighty-nine, who people are just throwing that number out like you throw out trash. Well, eighty-nine of these people are belongs, they belong to my union and they have brothers and sisters throughout the state and we will stand together. So please make your decisions widely, wisely. The classroom should be the last place a school board cuts. They're not in here. They are.[949.12][949.12](APPLAUSE). So please be judicious. I know you will. I know you're working at it and I appreciate that very, very much as do the members of my union. But this is serious business to cut eighty-nine jobs. And like you, I too speak with the Department of Education and they were taken aback when I suggested to them that Scranton was going to cut eighty-nine jobs. They're not quite sure how you're going to do it. Thank you for your time.[979.04][979.04](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Ms. Wall. Moving on to Budget and Finance, Director Schuster.
To the members of the Board of Directors of the School District of the City of Scranton, it's the recommendation of the Superintendent and the Budget and Finance Committee that the following resolution be considered. The list of bill payments in accordance with the bill payment approval policy be approved as per attached. I move that orders be drawn upon the Treasury as follows. December twenty-eighth, 2017, nine-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand-six-hundred-and-ten dollars and fourteen cents. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cognetti?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon?
Yes.
Naina Fermin.
To the members of the Board of Directors of the School District of the City of Scranton, it's the recommendation of the Superintendent and the Budget and Finance Committee that the following resolution be considered. The exception bill list that has per bill payment approval policy for the period ending December twenty-eighth, 2017, approved as attached. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Mrs. Cognetti?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon?
Yes.
Naina Fermin.
To the members of the Board of Directors of the School District of the City of Scranton, the Budget and Finance Committee and the Superintendent of Schools presents the following resolution for your consideration. Be it resolved that the delinquent tax report for the month of October 2017 be accepted. A copy of the monthly details available for review in the business office with a net to the district of three-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars and thirty cents. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cognetti?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon?
Yes.
Naina Fermin.
To the members of the Board of Directors of the School District of the City of Scranton, the Budget and Finance Committee and the Superintendent of Schools present the following resolution for your consideration. Be it resolved that the delinquent tax report for the month of November 2017 be accepted. A copy of the monthly details available for review in the business office with a net to the district of one-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars and fourteen cents. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon?
Yes.
Naina Fermin.
To the members of the Board of Directors of the School District of the City of Scranton, the Budget and Finance Committee and the Superintendent of Schools present the following resolution for your consideration. Be it resolved that the Treasury's report for the period ending October of 2017 be accepted as followed with a balance and a general account of twenty-three-million-five-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars and thirty-three cents. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cognetti?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon?
Yes.
Naina Fermin.
To the members of the School Board of Directors, it's the recommendation of the Superintendent and the Budget and Finance Committee that the following resolution be approved. Whereas in accordance with the real estate tax law, any property not sold at judicial sales shall be listed in the repository of unsold properties. The following properties have been sold and will be returned to the taxpaying status with the Tax Claim Bureau. Five forty Alder Street, Morgan Highway Route 307, nine forty-four Joel Rav. Therefore, be it resolved that the School District of the City of Scranton does hereby approve the above referenced properties for repository sale pursuant to the real estate tax law on section six twenty-seven of said act. This resolution is subject to the approval of other taxing bodies. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cognetti?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon?
Yes.
Naina Fermin.
To the members of the Board of Directors of the School District of the City of Scranton, the Budget and Finance Committee and the Superintendent of Schools present the following resolution for your consideration. Be it resolved that the single tax audit for calendar year ending December thirty-first, 2016, was prepared by Michael A. Barbetti, CPA LLC. Be accepted as per the enclosure. Statements were previously sent to the members of the school board. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cognetti?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon?
Yes.
Naina Fermin.
To the members of the Board of School Directors of the City of Scranton, it is the recommendation of the Superintendent and the Budget and Finance Committee that the following resolution be approved. Whereas in the Pennsylvania Auditor General's performance audit for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, 2016, 2015, 2014, and 2013, the Scranton School District received nine findings that will submit a corrective action plan in response to the findings. Now therefore, be resolved that the corrective action response to the Auditor General's findings be approved respectfully submitted.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, yes, ma'am, President. On this vote, I will be abstaining due to my employment with the Auditor General.
Also on the question, I would like to make a motion to table this resolution.
Can I say something, please?
Go ahead.
I can't, I can't find my negative time. I can't keep my mouth shut anymore. I have four kids with autism that do get bused and for you guys to do what you're doing is unacceptable. I'm like sick to my stomach. I've got four kids that are still in school. Two of my children attended school and they're seniors this year. They're on the honor roll. They want to go to college. They, they want to make something of their life. I've got two kids in Northeast Intermedia School that are sixth grade and eighth grade. My son Jacob, he's on the honor roll. My kids at the tenth are on count roll. I, I can't, I can't deal with, I can't deal with this. It's ridiculous. You're cutting things that these children... Now, don't say here anybody talk about special needs, what they need in school, what you're taking away from them. You're talking about buses, okay? I'm willing to drive my kids to school. I'm willing to give the bus company money to take my kids to school and be... You're not going to take away art and music and everything else that these kids depend on. Over my dead body, I'll, I'll fight, I'll go to Harrisburg. I'm willing to go to Harrisburg because I'm the only parent that I know of right now that has special needs that stands up to you guys, that's not great to stand up to you guys, to talk about our children. I'm not going to do it.[1436.47][1436.47](APPLAUSE). And I'm ready to tell you why, but why is it that nobody talks about special needs kids? It's all, and excuse me for saying it this way, the normal children as part of the community. All our children are normal, okay? In any way, shape, form, we all look at our children. We love them for what they are. We don't love them because they're geniuses or they don't get this or they don't get that or they can't speak or they can't, they can't cooperate. They have cerebral palsy, they have Down's Syndrome.
Ma'am, we'll be happy to talk to you after the meeting. We're in the middle of taking a vote. We'll be more than happy to talk to you.
I just want to know why you're cutting ten special needs, uh, when there's only, I think, two special needs classes at, at Northeast Intermedia. There's, there's none here that I know of. There's learning education. You took the one from the West End Intermedia that you took the opposite support from me.
Ma'am, we'll talk to you after the meeting.
And what's that resolve? And I'm sorry, Mrs. Dixon, I know you just came into the, into the uniform office, everything, but everybody gets up, they're all just ready to go ahead and talk and vote. You want to take away from all the special needs kids because you don't think they're worthy? I'll tell you...
Ma'am, we're, we're out of the public comment. We're currently in the middle of the vote. We'll talk to you after the meeting.
My son is terminal right now. I couldn't make it down here and I wanted to talk and I'm not going to shut my mouth for my kids. They deserve more. They deserve better. And I'll make damn sure, ask their mom that they get what they deserve. And any other parent that's afraid to come up and, and speak with you people, I'm not going to sit down. I'm going to stand up for my kids. Because if I'm not going to be a, a delegate for them or, I, I can't even, I, I, I can't speak for myself and my kids. I don't need anybody else. I don't need an advocate.[1561.51][1561.51](APPLAUSE).
Do we have a second? Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Casey?
Abstain.
Is this a vote to table?
It's a vote to table.
I second Mr. Schuster's motion to table this.
Vote to table.
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon?
Yes.
Naina Fermin.
Scranton School Board, the 2018 budget, the contents include budget resolution to file for solicitor number one, 2018 tax levies. Number two, real estate taxes, resolution to file for solicitor number two, 2018. Number three, five-eleven taxes, resolution to file for solicitor number three, 2018. Levy earned income tax, mercantile business privilege tax, mercantile tax, business privilege tax, local service tax, realty transfer tax. Number four, resolution to file for solicitor number four, 2018, general conditions. Number five, appointment of tax collector. Number six, appointment of tax collector for earned income tax, number six. file for solicitor number one, 2018 tax levies. Number two, real estate taxes, resolution to file for solicitor number two, 2018. Number three, 511 taxes, resolution to file of solicitor number three, 2018. Levy earned income tax, mercantile business privilege tax, mercantile tax, business privilege tax, local service tax, realty transfer tax. Number four, resolution to file for solicitor number four, 2018, general conditions. Number five, appointment of tax collector. Number six, appointment of tax collector for earned income tax, number six. Number seven, designation of depositories for tax collections. Number eight, appointment of administrative review officer. And nine, taxpayer bill of rights disclosure statement for action on the 28th day of December 2017. Scranton School Board, resolution to file for solicitor number one, 2018 budget, be it resolved that the board of directors of the school district of the city of Scranton hereby authorize the expenditures of $161,195,609 revenue and other funding sources of $157,668,700 with a deficit of $3,527,539 being an unbalanced budget as permitted by the Pennsylvania Department of Education. The 2018 budget is to be balanced with the final passage of the final budget before April 1st, 2018. Be it further resolved upon the adoption of the placeholder budget, copies which are carried hereby are available for the public. And the district secretary shall file and advance the budget in accordance with law and the same shall be done with the final budget which shall be passed before April 1st, 2018. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Olesky?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cognetti?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon?
Yes.
Nina Fermin.
Real estate tax levy. Be it further resolved that the board of directors of the school district of the city of Scranton hereby levies a tax, $128.47 per $1,000 of assessed valuation of real estate pursuant to the authority of the Act of the General Assembly, March 10th, 1949. PL 30, ART 6, section 672 as amended. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Olesky?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cognetti?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon?
Yes.
Nina Fermin.
511 taxes be it further and separately resolved under the authority of the Local Tax Enabling Act of 1965, Act 511, PL 1257 of the Act of the Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and in compliance with the school laws of Pennsylvania as amended. There is levy claimed and imposed taxes for the calendar year 2018 and that Act 511 taxes hereinafter levied under the Local Tax Enabling Act of 1965 are extended to generate the maximum amounts of tax revenue allowed by permitted by law. And that where the city of Scranton and or the school district of the city of Scranton have perfected claims to appropriate proportionate shares of any of the hereafter recited Act 11, 511 taxes, that these claims shall be persistent and remain in force and in effect. And that where the maximum levy has been hereby made, the same shall only be adjusted or reduced in accordance with law to that amount which shall represent a proportionate share of the school district of the city of Scranton. And therefore the subjects and subject matter of taxes levied by the school district of the city of Scranton for the year 2018 are intended to be within the limits of the school district of the city of Scranton. Codeminius with the city of Scranton while the aggregate of taxes collected by similar levies, if any, by the city of Scranton are separate, distinct, and apart from these taxes levied hereinunder by the school district of the city of Scranton unless otherwise provided by law and shall be collected by tax collectors herein named and appointed or hereinafter named and appointed for which purpose they are continuing levy and impose the following Act 511 taxes, separate revolutions will be as followed. Earned income tax, mercantile business privilege tax, mercantile tax, business privilege tax, occupation privilege tax, realty transfer tax. Therefore the above taxes are contained for 2018 and shall continue in full force and effect unless repealed or amended by law or action of successor school boards. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Olesky?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cognetti?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon?
Yes.
Nina Fermin.
511 tax levy one, earned income tax, continuing a levy of 1% being a tax imposed upon salaries, wages, commission, earning, income, and other compensation of residents of the school district of the city of Scranton and upon net profits earned by such residents from all businesses, professions, and other activities, salaries, wages, commissions relating to earned income. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Olesky?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cognetti?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon?
Yes.
Nina Fermin.
511 tax levy two, mercantile and business privilege tax license, continuing a tax on all firms, persons, and entities engaging in occupations and businesses at the rate of $5 for the privilege of doing business to be known as a school license tax. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Mrs. Olesky?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cognetti?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Olesky?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cognetti?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Olesky?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cognetti?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mrs. Good Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cognetti?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Olesky?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon?
Yes.
Nina Fermin.
511 tax levy four, business privilege tax, continuing a tax upon the privilege of engaging in business at the rate of .00513 per dollar of gross annual receipts. $5.13 per $1,000 to be known as the business privilege based upon annual receipts for the preceding year, i.e. 2018. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cognetti?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Olesky?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon?
Yes.
Nina Fermin.
511 tax levy five, local service tax, continuing a tax of $5 on each individual engaging in occupation as defined by statute to be known as a local service tax. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Mrs. Cognetti?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Olesky?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon?
Yes.
Nina Fermin.
Tax levy six, realty transfer tax. According to a tax on the transaction of a property, transfer of a real property, each person who accepts the delivery of any document or on whose behalf delivery of any document is accepted shall be subject to paying a tax of one-half to 1% of the value of the property represented by each document, excepting those excluded by law to be known as a realty transfer tax. The collection which shall be through the recorder of deeds and for Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, for which purpose of said recorder of deeds is hereby deputized. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Olesky?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cognetti?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Nina Fermin.
General conditions. In order to fully effectuate the tax levies, their implementation and collection, the district secretary and/or district solicitor are hereby authorized to direct, to act upon the behalf of the school district in all matters necessary in carrying out the intent hereof, including but not limited to legal advertisement of same where required. All of the said levies are made in order to fund the general accounts of the school district in the conduct of a thorough and efficient public school system entrusted to the board of directors of the school district of the city of Scranton. Accordingly, all of the actions are collectively and individually intended to continue in effect. All previous actions taken on like and similar matters subject only to a way of amendments herein. To effect the tenor hereof, all previous enactments or funds appropriated on matters herein set forth shall be so adjusted, conformed, and compounded, including but not limited to budget appropriations made to, on, for behalf of the tax 511 tax collector and the administrative and salaried staff as supervised by him and the rules and regulations as published within the enactment of or reenactment of Act 511 taxes, which action shall commence January 1st, 2018. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Ms. Olesky?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cognetti?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Olesky?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cognetti?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon?
Yes.
Nina Fermin.
The appointment of the real estate and/or 511 tax collector, be it resolved that William Fox and/or his legal successor is recognized and/or appointed as the collector of taxes for the year 2018 or until within by action of the board of directors of the school district of the city of Scranton for levies as follows. Real estate taxes, local service tax, business privilege tax, mercantile tax, school license tax. Be it further resolved that the board of directors of the school district of the city of Scranton shall require the posting of adequate bonds in conformity with law and/or based upon previous practice in these same premise, which shall be properly approved by court and/or the district solicitor and filed with the district secretary. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Olesky?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cognetti?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon?
Yes.
Nina Fermin.
The appointment of the real estate and/or 511 tax collector, be it resolved that William Fox and/or his legal successor is recognized and/or appointed as the collector of taxes for the year 2018 or until within by action of the board of directors of the school district of the city of Scranton for levies as follows. Real estate taxes, local service tax, business privilege tax, mercantile tax, school license tax. Be it further resolved that the board of directors of the school district of the city of Scranton shall require the posting of adequate bonds in conformity with law and/or based upon previous practice in these same premise, which shall be properly approved by court and/or the district solicitor and filed with the district secretary. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Olesky?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cognetti?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Olesky?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cognetti?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Olesky?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cognetti?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon?
Yes.
Nina Fermin.
The appointment of administrative hearing officer, be it resolved that William Fox and/or his legal successor is recognized and/or appointed as administrative hearing officer pursuant to Act 50 of 1998 at section 8430, section 4, and shall be prepared to provide taxpayer review or appeal process as was offered on the effective date of this statute, Act 50 of 1998. Be it further resolved that any and all forms, rules, as well as practices and or procedures previously utilized by the tax collector on the effective date of this statute can be adopted. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
On the question?
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cognetti?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon?
Yes.
Nina Fermin.
The school district of the city of Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, resolution authorizing the incurrence of tax and revenue anticipation debt in the ensuing of the tax and revenue anticipation note in a maximum principal amount of $19,500, accepting the offer of First National Bank and establishing the terms of the note.
maybe looking at 2019, make sure that we're getting what we need from this company.
Roll call.
Mr. McCandrick.
Yes.
Mrs. Olesky.
Yes.
Mr. Schuster.
Yes.
Mr. Casey.
Yes.
Mrs. Cognetti.
Yes.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Lush.
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick.
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon.
Yes.
Naina Fermin.
Designation of depositories for tax collection. Be it resolved that First National Bank Clark Center of Pennsylvania be hereby designated depository in which the funds and monies in the custody of William Fox and Burckheimer Associates or their legal successors may be deposited. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
On the question.
Can I make a quick statement? As we go into 2018, we have, as a board, come together to talk about going through each vendor that we have to make sure that we're getting the best deal possible. I think something like this with Burckheimer is an opportunity to do that as a board, obviously working with the county, but I think that would be an example where we could maybe looking at 2019, make sure that we're getting what we need from this company.
Roll call.
Mr. McCandrick.
Yes.
Mrs. Olesky.
Yes.
Mr. Schuster.
Yes.
Mr. Casey.
Yes.
Mrs. Cognetti.
Yes.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Lush.
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick.
Yes.
Mrs. Olesky.
Yes.
Mr. Schuster.
Yes.
Mr. Casey.
Yes.
Mrs. Cognetti.
Yes.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Lush.
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick.
Yes.
Mrs. Olesky.
Yes.
Mr. Schuster.
Yes.
Mr. Casey.
Yes.
Mrs. Cognetti.
Yes.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Lush.
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon.
Yes.
Naina Fermin.
Designation of depositories for tax collection. Be it resolved that First National Bank Clark Center of Pennsylvania be hereby designated depository in which the funds and monies in the custody of William Fox and Burckheimer Associates or their legal successors may be deposited. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
On the question. Roll call.
Mrs. Olesky.
Yes.
Mr. Schuster.
Yes.
Mr. Casey.
Yes.
Mrs. Cognetti.
Yes.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Lush.
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick.
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon.
Yes.
Naina Fermin.
The appointment of administrative hearing officer. Be it resolved that William Fox and/or his legal successor is recognized and/or appointed as the administrative hearing officer pursuant to Act 50 of 1998 at Section 8430, Section 4, and shall be provided to provide taxpayer review or appeal process as was offered on the effective date of this statute, Act 50 of 1998. Be it further resolved that any and all forms, rules, as well as practices and or procedures previously utilized by tax collector on the effective date of this statute can be adopted. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
On the question. Roll call.
Mr. Schuster.
Yes.
Mr. Casey.
Yes.
Mrs. Cognetti.
Yes.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Schuster.
Yes.
Mr. Casey.
Yes.
Mrs. Cognetti.
Yes.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Schuster.
Yes.
Mr. Casey.
Yes.
Mrs. Cognetti.
Yes.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Lush.
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick.
Yes.
Mrs. Olesky.
Yes.
Mr. Schuster.
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon.
Yes.
Naina Fermin.
The resolution to file of solicitor number nine, 2018, the subject is the taxpayer bill of rights and disclosure statement. Be it resolved that pursuant to Act 50 of 1998 at Section 8423, the attached taxpayer bill of rights and disclosure statement be adopted. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
On the question. Roll call.
Mr. Casey.
Yes.
Mrs. Cognetti.
Yes.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Lush.
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick.
Yes.
Mrs. Olesky.
Yes.
Mr. Schuster.
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon.
Yes.
Naina Fermin.
The school district of the city of Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, resolution authorizing the incurrence of tax and revenue anticipation debt in the ensuing of the tax and revenue anticipation note in a maximum principal amount of $19,500, accepting the offer of First National Bank and establishing the terms of the note. Whereas the school district of the city of Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania anticipates current revenues as yet uncollected, and whereas the school district requires additional funds for current anticipated expenditures to fund anticipated deficits, and whereas the school district has the term that is necessary to borrow for the purpose of meeting current and anticipated expenses for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2018 by issuing a note to be repaid from the receipt of anticipated taxes and revenues, and whereas First National Bank of Pennsylvania has submitted to the school district a proposal to purchase the proposed tax and revenue anticipation note of 2018 of the school district dated December 15, 2017, and the school district desires by the adoption of the resolution to accept such proposal and authorize the issuance of sale of its tax and revenue anticipation note. Now therefore, be it resolved that the board of school directors of the district of the city of Scranton is hereby resolved by the authority of said board as follows: One, the school district hereby authorize the issuance of tax and revenue tax anticipation note in the maximum principal of $19,500, the tran, which is considered the tran, in anticipation of this receipt of current taxes and revenues, to be sold at private sale. The school district has determined it to be in the best financial interest to award the sale by private negotiation. Number two, the tran shall be in the denomination of $19,500, shall be redeemable at any time at the option of the school district without penalty or premium, shall be fully registered without coupons, shall be dated the earliest date possible under the law, bear interest as the fixed rates set forth in Option 1 of the proposal, which interest shall be payable at maturity. Shall mature on December 30th, 2018, and shall be payable at Scranton office of the bank and shall be substantially in the form annexed to the resolution as Exhibit A, hereby made part of this resolution as the fully set form at this place. Number three, the tran issued pursuant to the resolution shall be a general obligation of the school district. The school district hereby covenants with the owners from time to time of the tran that if funds are not available for full payment of the tran within the fiscal year and wish it is issued, then the school district will either, one, include the amounts necessary to pay the tran and its budget for the next fiscal year pursuant to Section 8125 of the Debt Act to extend that permitted applicable by law. Number two, fund such amounts for the next fiscal year in accordance with Sections 8129 and 8130 of the Debt Act. Number three, provide for the payment of the tran by any combination of one and two and all events upon notice to, and with the consent and agreement of the bank. Number four, the school district hereby covenants with the owners from time to time of the tran that if make no use of the proceeds of the tran, which if used and were reasonably expected on the date of the issue of the tran, would have been cause of the tran to be an arbitrage bond, which the meaning of Section 148 of the Code and the regulations thereunder that will comply with the requirements of the International Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended, and the regulations throughout the term of the tran. Number five, if the principal amount of the tran plus the principal amount of other tax exempt obligations issued and to be issued by the school district or by supporting a government unit within its jurisdiction during the calendar year in which the tran is to be issued exceeds $15 million, and if the gross proceeds of the tran are invested at a yield greater than the yield on the tran or not expended or deemed to have been expended pursuant to Section 148 F4B3 of the Code, within six months from the date of issuance, the school district covenants that as agreed at the U.S. Treasury within 60 days after maturity dated the tran, that the amount of the investment income on the tran proceeds which extends the amount which have been earned by the tran proceeds have been invested at a yield equal to the yield on the tran. Number six, the proposal is hereby accepted and shall be incorporated into this resolution as Exhibit B. Herein, the president and the secretary of the board of school directors are hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver a duplicate original proposal to the bank. Number seven, the tran is designated as a qualified tax exempt bond, and the term is defined in Section 265 of the Code and amended. No part of the proceeds of the tran shall at any time be used directly or indirectly to acquire securities or other obligations, and acquisition of which should cause the tran to be arbitrage bond as defined in the Code. Eight, the tran shall be secured by a pledge and a lien and charge on the taxes and all other revenues of the school district to be received during the period when the tran will be outstanding, including during a period of default. Number nine, the president of the board of school directors be and hereby is authorized to direct, to execute, and deliver the name of, on behalf of and under the seal of the school district, the tran in the form and containing terms described above, and the secretary of the board of school directors be and hereby is authorized and directed to attest to the same. Number 10, the treasurer of the board of school directors is hereby authorized and directed to prepare or cause to be prepared a certificate to taxes and revenues to be collected and a certificate of cumulative deficit as required by Section 8126 in the Local Government Unit Debt Act of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Number 11, the officers of the board of school directors be and hereby are authorized and directed to perform all acts which are necessary and proper for the valid issuance of the security of the tran, including the preparation and execution of the tax certificate, resolved this day, the 28th day of December, 2017. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
On the question. Roll call.
Mrs. Cognetti.
Yes.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Schuster.
Yes.
Mr. Casey.
Yes.
Mrs. Cognetti.
Yes.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Lush.
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon.
Yes.
Naina Fermin.
Tax levy, five, local service tax, continuing a tax of $5 on each individual engaging in occupation, as defined by statute to be known as a local service, as respectfully submitted.
Second.
On the question. Roll call.
Mrs. Cognetti.
Yes.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Schuster.
Yes.
Mr. Casey.
Yes.
Mrs. Cognetti.
Yes.
Mr. Schuster.
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon.
Yes.
Naina Fermin.
Thank you, Director Schuster.
You're welcome.
Education, Director McCandrick.
Okay, members of the board, school directors of the city of Scranton, it is the recommendation of the superintendent and the education committee that the following resolution be approved. Whereas a request for approval, as attached, has been submitted to the board of school directors for the following out-of-state trips: Scranton High French Club, Metropolitan Museum, New York City, West High School, Boston, Massachusetts, West High School Marching Band, Boston, Massachusetts, Northeast Intermediate National Junior Honor Society, Statue of Liberty, and the Liberty Science Museum. South Intermediate Literary, I'm sorry, newspaper and yearbook clubs, also in New York City. Therefore, be resolved, the Scranton School Board hereby approves the field trips as per the attached request. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
On the question. Roll call.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Lush.
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick.
Yes.
Mrs. Olesky.
Yes.
Mr. Schuster.
Yes.
Mr. Casey.
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon.
Yes.
Naina Fermin.
Thank you, Director McCandrick.
You're welcome.
Education, Director McCandrick.
Okay, members of the board, school directors of the city of Scranton, it is the recommendation of the superintendent and the education committee that the following resolution be approved. Whereas a request for approval, as attached, has been submitted to the board of school directors for the following out-of-state trips: Scranton High French Club, Metropolitan Museum, New York City, West High School, Boston, Massachusetts, West High School Marching Band, Boston, Massachusetts, Northeast Intermediate National Junior Honor Society, Statue of Liberty, and the Liberty Science Museum. South Intermediate Literary, literary, I'm sorry, newspaper and yearbook clubs, also in New York City. Therefore, be resolved, the Scranton School Board hereby approves the field trips as per the attached request. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
On the question. Roll call.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Lush.
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick.
Yes.
Mrs. Olesky.
Yes.
Mr. Schuster.
Yes.
Mr. Casey.
Yes.
Naina Fermin.
Thank you, Director McCandrick. Policy, Director Casey.
I, one, to the members of the board of school directors of the city of Scranton, it is the recommendation of the superintendent and the policy committee that the following resolution be approved. Whereas the policy 311, as attached, reduction of staff, formerly suspensions slash furloughs, has been revised by the recommendation of the Pennsylvania School Board Association. Whereas, policy 311 has been revised by the recommendation of the Pennsylvania School Board Association, PSBA, and is recommended for approval. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
On the question. Roll call.
Mrs. Olesky.
Yes.
Mr. Schuster.
Yes.
Mr. Casey.
Yes.
Mrs. Cognetti.
Yes.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Lush.
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick.
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon.
Yes.
Naina Fermin.
Thank you, Director Casey. Personnel, Director Lush.
Yes, Madam President. The members of the board of school directors of the city of Scranton, it is the recommendation of the superintendent and the personnel committee that the attached list of appointments, assignments, resignations, recent positions, and leaves of absentee is approved. Appointments are effective upon receipt of proper criminal records, immigration, and medical and child abuse reports. Salaries are in accordance with the collective bargain agreement ISO approved.
Second.
On the question. Roll call.
Mr. Schuster.
Yes.
Mr. Casey.
Yes.
Mrs. Cognetti.
Yes.
Mr. Schuster.
Yes.
Mr. Casey.
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon.
Yes.
Naina Fermin.
Thank you, Director Lush.
You're welcome.
Education, Director McCandrick.
Okay, members of the board, school directors of the city of Scranton, it is the recommendation of the superintendent and the personnel committee that the attached list of appointments, assignments, resignations, recent positions, and leaves of absentee is approved. Appointments are effective upon receipt of proper criminal records, immigration, and medical and child abuse reports. Salaries are in accordance with the collective bargain agreement ISO approved.
Second.
On the question. Roll call.
Mr. Schuster.
Yes.
Mr. Casey.
Yes.
Mrs. Cognetti.
Yes.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Lush.
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick.
Yes.
Mrs. Olesky.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Naina Fermin.
Thank you, Director Lush. Special education, Director Casey.
And one, to the members of the board of directors, the superintendent and special education committee hereby recommend the following resolution for your consideration. Whereas, the school district of the city of Scranton is subject of administrative proceedings and civil suits wherein the appropriateness of students' special education programs have been challenged, or suits have been filed in matters of KR/ODR number 19373-16-17, SL -ODR number 19415-16-17, MA ODR number MA 19849-1718, AS and DM and J, and whereas the parties have reached a settlement agreement in this matter upon the terms and conditions previously provided for your consideration, and therefore be it resolved that the settlements as indicated above be approved upon the terms and conditions as described, and the superintendent or director of special education are hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to consummate the matter. Respectfully submitted.
On the question. Roll call.
Mr. Casey.
Yes.
Mrs. Cognetti.
Yes.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Schuster.
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon.
Yes.
Naina Fermin.
New business, is there any new business?
I would just like to take this opportunity to thank the entire board and the whole team of us that worked very diligently for the last couple of weeks on this budget. We have a lot of work, a lot of hard work ahead of us, and I would like to announce that we're canceling the special meeting scheduled for tomorrow since the budget has been passed.
Would you like to make a motion to adjourn?
Second. Meeting is adjourned.